Twenty-eighth Act of Playbook Meeting. Chip Vannell is absent, and so my name is Tom Cashin, and I'll chair the meeting tonight. And the first item on the agenda is approval of those minutes for May 16th and June 6th. Review those approved when it is time. Tom, can you explain to me what the deal is and why it's amended, set of minutes?
Are they amended?
Well, me and I-
I don't have as many pages to give out.
May 16th and 6th, right? Yeah. So we have two sets of amendments.
We added the phosphorus at the last meeting.
Right.
That was really questionable.
The original set didn't have anything about phosphorus. They asked that, I renewed the tape and inserted that. I will look at it now.
No, it's good to make a motion except the May 16th minutes.
Second. Close, some closing.
Did you look?
June 6th, review. Is your second?
We're doing it.
Yeah, June 6th.
It's all around the agenda. Anybody?
Does it work on August 6th?
I was here, so you were here.
Yep, I first did it.
Oh, you first did it? I was second.
Was it you?
Can I get a copy of those notes that I referred to? Oh, I can go a little further.
I have just have a question or a question I remember. Because I think we went one step further in our discussion in the second to last paragraph. I had a question, and Chip and I were discussing the issue of the notion of leaving the vine door open, so to speak, by the phrase "but not limited to." Because of the amount of clarity that was necessary in this work, I was questioning whether that would pass muster, and I was curious if anybody else remembered what-
Where are you looking, Tom?
Last paragraph on page one, on June 6th.
The last paragraph of the document.
Yep, under three, "All Business," on June 6th, where Chip was rewording a certain sentence in there, and it starts with the requirement would now read, "The applicant shall submit an LID plan for stormwater management as outlined but not limited to those listed in..."
Well, does that mean that the plan has to at least meet the outlined plan in the LID manual, but it could go beyond that?
It allows for more-
They wanted to use a extension that wasn't in there?
Usually, we use some language like that when we send in the job letter, and it says something like, "Applicant shall perform the following duties related to apples harvesting, thinning, pruning," but these tasks are not limited to, shall include but are not limited to the named tasks, I think is how that works. I don't know how that applies to this.
Okay, now that makes it clear.
So there's other things that could apply beyond, I suppose? I mean, how is it turned into?
So we're okay with it? Maybe it would be useful for Gavin and Jess and I maybe to, now that Bob and, well, Yoli, you reworded it, let's see, but you were privy to some of the discussion with Paul. I had some notions, we all probably have some notions, all three of us, as to how that subcommittee ought to work, but you might give us a little, it would be interesting to listen to the three of you go around the table and just share your thoughts, or we'll maybe just go around the table once and just see what happens, as to how that work might proceed, and if I may, I'll just make some initial suggestions I've been thinking about briefly. The question arose tonight when we were speaking briefly with Paul to set up the calendar of when to do this, and it's going to be, I guess, initially anyway, the fourth Tuesday of every month, and we have to, we need your help, Brenda, posting that and making it official, I guess, and can you help the public access, I suppose? And we can meet a deadline of July on that, right? Because you can't do June, obviously, though.
I couldn't yet in time for June, but July, I guess.
Right, okay, okay, we appreciate your help on that. My thought was, if we're going to open this up to discussion, I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but I was struck by the night when Chip and Jess and I met with Bob, and he basically, I felt like I was cold at the end of about a half hour of discussion. It was like-
There was no discussion, we were lecturing about what was in the handbook.
Well, we couldn't get a talk-
It had nothing to do with the ordinance or us.
It was like we were talking basketball or something, but, yeah, and I sensed that, maybe it was because I had been absent for so long in the late innings of this work, I felt like I was out of my depth completely. I thought I knew the ordinance was about when I started reading, it didn't make sense, you know, at all. I felt like I was back in the Newton Center, I was speaking in tongues or something, but... I would like to suggest to the subcommittee anyway that we start with section one as laid out, we're not going to stray from the notion of having it as a integrated document, I mean, that was why we moved from Forest Bell to JT. So that's a given, but I would like to revisit the Forest Bell thinking on points of contention, you know, when they arise, when between the three of us and Paul are coming up and are talking past one another again, and there's a lack of clarity, I'd like to be able to broaden the depth of what we're considering and just revisit Forest's thinking on the same points, you know, if they're available, if it's clear enough in our work that we can say, well, this is applicable to this paragraph, you know, in JT's work, this is applicable to the same forest points.
How do we do that over and over?
We apparently haven't done it enough.
Not at all.
I don't think Paul has the same ordinance in mind. I think he's got his own ordinance in mind.
Well, as he stated, he doesn't have to agree with everything we come up with, but he does have to understand it, so.
Right, but shouldn't we just go to the points of contention and start dealing with the meat instead of picking around on the-
Well, I think that-
You should come to common ground with him first. Because that's what we did last-
Try to get him to have the same perspective as him.
We kind of did that last meeting, I thought.
Well, I just wonder if you, to me, that feels like we're taking things out of context a little bit. I'd like to get him to, we kind of have to walk him through the whole, the thinking behind, you know, if it's the fifth paragraph, so to speak, that he doesn't, that he's fetching up on. He has to understand that the four succeeding paragraphs are, that's my point. I have worked with Paul before, and it was, it was only about a year ago, but it seems like it was a lifetime ago. It was, it was an interesting process in the degree of minutia that was necessary to get into with him. I mean, we were talking commas and talsies, et cetera, so-
Does Paul have a copy of Forest Bell's?
He will have, surely, yes.
Because maybe it would just-
He just gave them tonight.
It's just beautiful.
So that's my thinking off the cuff as to how we might proceed then, and I guess, I'm just, I want to tell you folks out in terms of how you think it might work, but I don't know whether we're going to get it or not, but I just think it's good to listen to some of your thinking here.
You know, thinking, jumping in here after missing his explanation two weeks ago as to what his issues were, and then looking at this and then talking to Brenda about, you know, what kind of took place at the last meeting, it seemed that he was focused on certain things.
Yeah.
And it seems like we should have spent some months trying to get through all the step-by-step, you know, sections, and it almost seems like it's redundant to go back and do that again, and stretch this out for another, you know, four months or more. My thinking is, and again, I might be wrong because I didn't hear that just the discussion was about last week or last time, but it seems that his focus is on that five-to-five, and a lot of it had to do with things that were just maybe misexplained. We weren't saying that you had to use the LID book, but we were saying, we were suggesting it, but it didn't come across that way, apparently. So if it's only, to some degree or way, things like that that are an issue with him, if he's a, you know, a grammatical kind of a person, you know, those are the things that are going to be, like you said, with commas and things along those lines, which are pretty, you know, probably pretty minor.
Yeah.
Now, if we can get him to come on board with that one and then fall back the other way, are there any issues here, are there any issues there, you know, maybe it kind of goes away, and all of a sudden you have something to work. Again, I'm only thinking maybe it wouldn't take as long.
Well, we, the other notion that I had was that we would do this in a, if we were indeed going to take it in sections, you know, start at the beginning, we would, as a subcommittee, work on making that clear and then bring it back to the board and then go into section two and that, so I just wanted to break it down into pieces and make it, make the processes as rational as we could.
Do you see a time going from now until, you know, the next town meeting in June, next year?
I would hope not, knowing from vast experience, it's likely to be a bit of a process, yeah.
We're not rewriting this from scratch, Tom. I really, you know, we're not, and we're not, I mean, we should really just go through the stuff that is a known problem.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that when we're done-
To start, I mean, we'll eventually all go through it, but why don't we take care of the stuff that's on everyone's mind and find out, you know, how relevant the rest of the stuff is.
Yeah, the second big thing with Paul was the calculations for phosphorus.
Right.
Right. But when he raises that point, that's the one that makes my antenna go up, he's basically, and we were, I don't know if we were totally grounded in our explanation of why that was necessary, and the, there are a number of points there that I was wondering about, the level of expertise that is necessary and the expense that was necessary to give rise to that information. That whole thing was a bit of a gray area in my mind in terms of our, our own perception of how it was going to work and how the applicant was going to derive the information.
When we get done with this discussion, what I tried to do before we came here tonight is take a calculation worksheet and plug in the addition that I put on my camp, which is on square, Branthis and Shapley, but it's still on square, same numbers that we're talking about, and then just run through it with the numbers that I put in to see if that makes sense to you.
Can you just pull up that thing that you-
How many pages is it?
It's, that's it, just the page. I have some, you know, other things on there. I have a drawing so that I could get the numbers that I needed to plug into the things.
Is that from the main or the new materials site?
I don't know where this one actually came from, to be honest with you, but it, you know, if my numbers that I plugged in were taken correctly, then, you know, the spreadsheet does the work, and so you just look at the bottom line, and as long as somebody's around to explain to me what the bottom line means, okay, I got to a bottom line, I just don't know what the bottom line is.
What is the bottom line?
Zero.
That means that you're not increasing the phosphorus, is that the truth?
Well, it seems like that, but it seems to me like it, I must be, because I've added-
Is it necessary?
Yeah, I got a whole bunch of things that need to be around the circle, I wanted to walk right through it.
And where did you access the formula?
I got this from Brenda.
So that was-
Maggie.
That's me, yeah.
Were there any questions that they asked, or, you know, cornered yourself, that you weren't sure about how you hear?
You know, I guess the first time I went through, maybe, and here you can see what the addition is.
Can you walk us through this?
Yeah, well, I don't know if you want to do it now or want to do it-
Is everybody okay?
Yep. So if you look at the drawing, the additions where it says eight hundred and ninety-six cubic feet, that's a, now a covered screen porch, and then the other five hundred and twelve is now a bathroom, it was eight by eight kind of deal.
And the water is-
The rest of it was there before.
Just to give us a sense of the competency, where's the water?
Look to your left, you see it says square pines. Hold it, hold it at this width, sorry.
Okay, I'm with you, yeah.
Square pine is there, and then where it says tiloway on the right side, that's Treasure Island property. Okay, and so essentially, you know, the lot, you can see that it's not square, or rectangular, but it's, you know, maybe seventy-three by, on the average, maybe a hundred and twenty kind of a thing. And you can see that it's set back, now, the interesting thing about this property is that all of this property here is very gradual, very gradual coming up toward the house, but on the, it's notable on the island, this is where I am, that there's a berm back about, that begins at about seventy-five to seventy-eight feet from the water, and that is definitely more than the fifteen degrees that we've been talking about, and the house straddles that berm. And so a big part of the house runoff from it goes to the back of the berm, doesn't even go toward the water, and the front part certainly does, comes down that pitched and then works its way toward the water, just to kind of give you an idea of what this property is like. Now, the whole thing doesn't take any of that into account.
It must be very permeable, it's sandy-
Oh, yeah, it's sand.
So it's pretty questionable whether any runoff is going to get to the lake.
It does, because of the hard storm, I can watch it work its way down through the pine needles, through the sand, it eventually reaches the water, and as a result of that, I'm having ASYCC come out, and they are going to, they have a project already set, and it's just a matter of getting them to come out to minimize that.
That's great.
So that's a plus. So if you look at the standard calculation, you know, the number in the first place, that PAPB, that point oh four is just for square pine, that's the number for phosphorus, square pine.
Is this the number that was in the-
Or in our-
In the-
Yes, that's where I looked to get that number. The total acreage of the property that you see is point two-five acres. Wetland acreage, I put zero, I don't have wetlands, I've never been told I have wetlands, and there's certainly nothing on the property to make you think that there's wetlands, so I put zero. Whether that's an absolute accurate, I couldn't tell you. The steep slope acreage is what I was just explaining to you, and I put down that particular berm going across the seventy-three feet of the property, I put it down as twenty percent of the property, or twenty percent of a quarter acre, and that's where my point zero-two-five acres comes from.
Was that defined anywhere?
No, it was me thinking about the property, looking at it, seeing it, and, okay, so yes, that's, that would be an estimate.
But there might very well be some definition sometimes for steep slopes.
Could be, could be. I mean, it's definitely a mixed flow, because it's less than fifteen, and then it's like this, it drops back down like this, and then it goes that way. It's just, and the lake a hundred, twenty years ago was to the berm, you know, before they got around to taking care of all the dams and getting the dams set the way they wanted to get them set, that's where the, that's where the water level was there.
So they're just wanting to know, how much of your property has a steep slope, right?
Yes.
So are you essentially netting out that gradual area and just that-
Doesn't seem to ask me a whole lot about it. I mean, the other part, the existing developed area, is the area where the house is, and so that takes up, that existing house before the addition was about twenty percent, so twenty percent of my twenty, my point two-five acres gave me that point zero-five acres of existing developed property. And then the other numbers were calculated, those numbers, you know, came out, I didn't have to do anything, so the spreadsheet took care of those. So you see where it says the project phosphorus budget is point zero-zero-nine, so it's, this is telling me that I can have up to that amount. I don't know that for sure, and that would be a question I would have to ask someone, you know, if I came into this office, or in this case, when I went into Shapley, I was doing it today. This project was done about, I don't know, maybe five years ago, something like that, six years ago. So now you go to the lower part, where it says small watershed adjustment, and you see the same number for the square pine, point zero-four. Project acreage, that point two-two-five is A taken from above, so that number again is just plugged in because I've already gotten it, it's already been calculated from the earlier part of the worksheet. Allowable increase in the town share of annual phosphorus, I put down zero only because I figured, well, we don't want it to go any higher, so I, I didn't know if we have anything that we can say, we can let it go up a certain amount, I don't know that.
Where's appendix C?
I think China has something like that.
I don't know what appendix C is. I thought at first it was the chart, the phosphorus chart, but when I went back and looked at the ordinance, it doesn't say anything about appendix C there, so it must have come from somewhere maybe in something prior to this on the worksheet, when I printed it off.
That seems to me like it's in those areas, probably, I mean, I would suspect there's a matrix of some sort with maybe S, you know?
Yeah, maybe, but I'm looking at zero as being-
Which you can't increase it with.
Right, so I mean, if anything, it's only going to get better from the way I look at it. If I put down, well, ten, then, okay, I could be way off, but leave it at zero and we'll see what happens. The area available for development was ten percent because the existing thing at the time was, I can only have property, thirty percent of the property of the land, and so the original house was twenty, the addition was going up, eh, was going up maybe eight percent, nine percent, I forgot exactly what it was, so I just plugged it in at ten percent higher than probably it is, and so that's where I came up with that number of zero, I mean, point zero-two-five. And either way, I'm at the thirty mark or just under the thirty mark, so I can't put any additions onto my property anymore. The calculated number nine is there, the ratio, and then the two zeros down below are the calculated numbers again. So again, the numbers keep going through, and assuming zero is okay, then it looks easy if zero all of a sudden means something's screwy, it's not right.
I suspect that zero under FC is wrong, because any time you multiply anything with zero, it's zero. So to me, the appendix, so it might be some, if there's an appendix referred to, there must be some number that you get from that appendix, I would suspect, because it's-
Yeah, good point.
Well, the town may not, it may not be, this formula may not be applicable to your particular issue, because we don't have a town allowance. If, doesn't Chi, I don't, I didn't read this stuff. Doesn't China's phosphorus ordinance have an allowance in it that's, because there's industry on China Lake, you know, I mean, they've got, it's not just residences, and it's a very polluted lake, so there is discharge going into that lake, and I was, I thought that that's what that was referring to, is that it's just one, I don't know, I don't know, but-
This is from DEP, though.
It may be that you got it here because of the out民, right?
This is from DEP, is it from a handbook or a-
Well, the appendix C, this is part of the, this is appendix F, isn't it? Wasn't this part of the appendix in the DEP book? Was it working?
The LID manual, I think.
Not the LID manual.
Not the LID manual.
No, no, it's in the DEP, I can't remember the name, but I have it-
It's cited at the bottom of this thing, and I think it's the same document, I'm not sure. Does everybody get a copy of this from Brenda? This, this citation is a document that's volume two, Phosphorus Control and Lake Watersheds, A Technical Guide to Evaluating New Development, and it's called appendix B, so who knows, it's appendix C in the worksheet, it's in the center.
Well, it's in the whole book, it was, I'll put phosphorus.
Volume two.
That's right, volume two, I remember that.
Colon, Phosphorus Control and Lake Watersheds, semicolon, A Technical Guide to Evaluating New Development. I kind of think we're going to have to get home to this.
It's online.
Bob, I got a quick question.
Yeah.
In this first calculation there, the bold print at the bottom there where it says project phosphorus budget, colon, PBB equals- colon, P P B equals P times A, what is the value, where, what is P? I don't see the.
Project phosphorus budget, right next to it, it's the initials for, it's right to the left of the.
Yeah, but what's the P?
What's the P, the single P?
That's, that's the answer. So P plus A gets you.
Times A.
Yeah, so what's P? Unless P is the, the number up at the top. So what's, what's point zero four times point two two five?
I still think it would be helpful to get.
Well, if you take, that's where it is, that comes out to be point zero zero nine.
That's what you did for your calculation.
Didn't she say she went through something like this? And then it was, it was a little bit tedious for us. Because I wouldn't say that's true for this, it's a little bit tedious for us.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what you're going to do, you're going to come out with point zero four.
Which is zero at that top.
Right. So P is P A P B, and A is the calculated number for the project acreage.
So both of, if, in the standard calculation, P A P B is point zero four, that comes from appendix C.
Well, it probably is also an appendix C, I took it from our ordinance.
Well.
Because I hadn't seen appendix C.
And then, and yet S W T is it, is.
Yeah, I took it as being the same thing. I, you're right, it could be, that could be a misinterpretation there too. So that's another question.
But having that appendix C is pretty critical to the whole.
Well, P, I mean, they would have called, if P was supposed to be P P B, they would have just said it.
Yeah, but if that was the case, why did they call it down here in your calculation, P instead of P A P B?
Wait.
You know, when you were asking before, what's P B, P P B, and then what's the P?
Well, I see what P P B is, it's, it's a, a abbreviation for your project phosphorus budget.
I think that zero is, is probably a wrong, because it seems to me like the lake is able to buffer a certain amount of phosphorus annually. So there's some acceptable level of phosphorus that the lake is able to, to accept and not become more degree.
Yeah. So we, we, you're right, that, that gets us critical that we find that appendix C before we can be sure what we've got.
But I think this is hopeful, that it's not found like big of a monster.
Exactly. You've got one, one of these.
This is right.
So does it give us a number?
It's, it's the per acre phosphorus allocations for selected new owners. I'll let you, this is your main. Yeah, either Linda Shire or somebody. Either Linda Shire or somebody from the main D E P on a committee and, and half of the subcommittee is digging through this and Paul and the rest of the board go through this, we don't, we, you know, we shouldn't have to.
I think that's Paul's point, it ought to be a simple, clear process. And maybe it is, and we just don't know how to handle this.
So they're saying that F C, I mean, again, looking at it quick, but the number they have for F C, that column, is two nine point five four, which certainly changes that a lot.
The, the other questions that float to the top after listening to Bob is, we've got to come up with a steep slope definition, and we've got to find out what the hell they mean by what is included within the notion of existing developed area.
Well, all of these things has to be in.
This came from.
Yeah, it's got to be in there, what's a steep, I mean, they're going to have definitions.
And we have our own, our ordinance defines slopes at fifteen degrees, I can't remember if we use fifteen or twenty percent, but that's what we.
Sixteen, but, but they might have a different definition used for this.
And it's got to be figured out when, when it's mixed too, because properties typically are not just a nice gentle slope going on way, or like this, I mean, you got, you got combinations, and they might be an example of that. Even though I don't think I might lean as being steep, but that berm is steep.
How high is the berm?
Um, probably about six feet, something like that. I can't stand below it and see the other side of it, I mean, I can see the distance because it's short, you know, it's not very thick. But I, I can't see the other side, but right.
Gives you a big daylight base when you're kind of.
Yeah.
So S W T.
S W T, it says should be one eighty-three.
Instead of point zero four.
Which changes those numbers drastically, right? Are you trying to do it quick?
No, but, I mean, if you had the number to work with.
It should. It's all, it's just a matter of going back to the, you know, to the spreadsheet and plugging them in, and I'm going to get a new number for R, and I'm going to get probably new numbers down there in the blue.
There must be another, for instance, P A P B. That's, says from a sec, from appendix C. So there must be another page or something maybe?
No, it's right on there for square pond.
It just has that as P.
Look under per acre phosphorus allocation per year, it's P. And you go down, it's right along northeast.
Well, okay, that's my forum. I have the numbers.
Okay, just, just to clarify something in my own mind, P A B.
See, this number, this one is very.
Is watershed per acre phosphorus budget.
Instead of point zero four.
And P is per acre phosphorus.
And the other's like same.
So they, they are, those are two different values, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say that.
Looking, dicing off the, the sheet that Brenda just gave us, here they talk about the, the second to the last column right there, per acre, per acre phosphorus allocation per acre per year equals P. And then P A P B, as I understand it from your worksheet, is a value for the watershed per acre phosphorus budget.
The watershed, whatever lake you're on, because you have to state at the top which pond you're, you're going to be on, which lake.
But those would be two different values, am I correct?
No, it's the same value, square pond is point oh four oh.
I mean, it's, it's.
Okay, that, that would be something, you need some clarity on that.
So F, yeah, and F C in this case is twenty-nine point five four instead of zero.
Instead of zero.
A A D.
I'm just going to get us on.
Is point zero two, so they're around a hundred or something like that.
Well, we can talk to Linda in the interim, but does anybody else feel that, at least Linda and I would feel a lot more.
Yes, with point three.
With somebody from the D E P coming down and working us through this, if you've got a use of this tool, at least talk about it. We ought to have some understanding of what we're playing.
Well, you need to. Yeah, I mean, you need to, in the ordinance, say which calculation, you can't just say phosphorus calculation because it could be Hampshire, it could be, you know, wherever, so you have to refer, it's similar to the L I D manual. You have to refer to.
Sure.
You know, what, which is the correct calculation.
I mean, you want to, you want to refer to a worksheet that seems to be pretty easy to, to handle. I mean, I don't know if all the worksheets, I mean, you've got to have all the numbers, but how it's set up maybe is more difficult.
Well, and I don't think that you're going to have, you know, for instance, you've got, in the, in the standard calculation, you've got a number of areas that are calculated by somebody.
Yep.
Total acreage, the wetland acreage, the steep slope acreage, existing developed area, I mean, that, that needs to be a confirmed kind of number. Probably not in C E O, I expect, but somebody's going to have to say.
Be on your base plan.
Even in my case?
It should be on base plan.
I think I've never seen, you know, a side view like this of my property. I mean, I see it looking down, you know, I've seen that.
But if you went over it with your Google pointer, wouldn't it show the berm there?
Oh, maybe, but do you think that's something though that is on record somewhere, that you can get an official percentage? I mean, I'm estimating that it's ten percent.
Well, it's rise over run. So you want to know, like, over the area, how steep it is.
Yeah.
But what if it's a lot of bare areas, how do you, how do you know?
Just to larger, or added out. That might, I don't know what will count as significant, I mean, I don't think there, I don't know if this is mostly landscape, you want to be within, to the acre to a square foot. So I don't know, you need to be acre to a square centimeter, or, you know.
Is there a sentiment for?
It's kind of the size of the property, you have to, many hills you actually show in a drawing, but if it's a hill that's between you and the water, you would want to show it.
Sure.
You might just put a little star on it, put like a, an elevation from top of it, you know.
Is there any sentiment for having Brenda maybe contact D E P, the fallen office, and say, is there someone in the office that can come down and?
Well, don't we have a message from Linda Shire about this process?
We do, but I, I, I feel strongly about this thing here. Linda Shire, number one, lives and works in New Hampshire, and not to, not to say anything negative about Linda Shire, but I think we ought to get this from the author, so to speak, from someone in the D E P who would derive this and stuff, and has a working heart.
Right, but I was just thinking.
It would be great.
Trying to hurt first to get this in a little bit more direction and then maybe show us what we need to do.
What, did you redo the thing?
Yeah, plugged in those numbers from the, from the appendix, and everything else is, is the same as what I had, so.
So you can put, that's a lot of phosphorus.
This is where you need somebody from the D E P to say, okay, so now we've done this worksheet, tell me about it.
That'd want to know anybody?
Somebody's got to.
Yeah, you have to have some place where you're going to go with that one forty point three instead. What's the impact of that?
That's right, that's right, you got to have an answer to that question, which would be the next question.
Nobody in the town of Chaplain can do any development for the rest of the year.
Well, my question is hanging in the way, does anyone else think it might be worthwhile to have, like, an inquiry anyway, as to the availability of someone from the, from the D E P?
Well, isn't that what you're going to do with the subcommittee, isn't that, is going to be part of that?
My point would be that, that I think it would be worthwhile, since this is an area of concern and it's an area that we seem to lack an understanding on, wouldn't, wouldn't we all appreciate it?
Right, but not hit down low, right, when you want to get.
Well, it's one of the first things, one of the first.
But when you want to hit down with your subcommittee and really get these things hammered out and then?
It's one of the first notions anyways, if we were talking about points that rose to the surface in terms of Paul's difficulty with our draft, was the whole notion of the phosphorus calculation and how onerous it was, et cetera, et cetera. So, and we didn't have a sense of it, and I don't, I don't still at present as to how to generate and how, how difficult it is, what's in these values, I mean, I'm just asking for some, for some understanding from the state officials that came up to it. Won't cost us anything, that's why we pay these people something.
I mean, I think if you get them to come down and clear up a completed worksheet.
Yeah.
And say, okay, we think we've gone through it, we think we have the numbers.
Yeah.
What does it mean?
And maybe, maybe before that, we could get some kind of document, or Brenda's help, to, to raise up the speed as to what the, what the values that they're asking for here are, and the missing definitions and all. As you say, they must give definitions in some document that.
It's in the document volume number two that you listed, it's in that document.
You've seen that online.
I, yeah, because I brought the stuff in to the hearing.
I'm not even sure what project phosphorus budget is.
Like I said, you know, you take a sheet, fill in numbers, and then you go to the person and say, all right, this is what I've done, now you need to explain to me what this means.
Yeah, what happened here?
And so, so I mean, Ken ultimately would be the one who would then have to say, all right, this means this, or you, this means you can do this, or this means you can't do this, or, or whatever. Because nowhere in here does it come into and say, all right, if one hundred and forty point whatever is a number that's too high, now what do we do to lower it? You know, is it just going to be a rain guard here or something else here? What, you know, but in this whole calculation sheet, it doesn't give us that.
No, but it does seem like that's a little bit high still, and some of the numbers are not quite right with what we have here.
I mean, you're sure it could be one hundred and forty pounds per year, seems like a lot, so.
But if the standard threshold is one hundred and eighty-three and you're figuring one hundred and forty, aren't you way under?
Except in this case, he's going to be over because R is greater than point zero five. I don't understand what, why you did all the calculations like this.
What is this, the small watershed threshold in acres?
That was on the appendix.
Right, appendix C.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. If project acreage A is greater than the threshold acres, threshold acres is a hundred, so you're not. You don't do the small watershed adjustment. Because the project acreage A is point two two five, the threshold is a hundred and eighty-three. Is that's the way I'm reading it?
How the, how the heck could the project acreage ever be bigger than the? What, what is that?
Is that the area of the, of the lake?
That's what I was, that's what I was wondering.
That's just, just.
A hundred and eighty-three?
No, it's the lake of nine hundred and ninety acres.
Well, I'll have to, I'll crack open volume two of the phosphorus.
And even if you do the, even if you do that adjustment calculation, you only use it if it is less than the standard calculation.
What are you reading there?
Under small watershed development adjustment, Tom, it says if project acreage A is greater than the threshold acreage for the small watershed threshold.
Yeah.
Which in this case is a hundred and eighty-three acres. So it's not greater, so you don't do it. However, if it was greater than, you would calculate it and only use the value, the way I read it, if it is less than the standard calculation P P B.
So square pond is not a small watershed, is that basically what we're finding out?
That would almost be about the same.
Okay, so what they're saying is that if the threshold is a hundred and eighty-three acres, the square pond is a lot. So this is like, so the top one you've calculated for residents, the, the lower one is, is for, say, something like Swan Lake or, you know, like a tiny lake that's got an acreage that's under a hundred and eighty-three.
Gotcha.
And then they would, that would be an allotment for the year and whatever. and whatever projects were going on that year would have to fit within that allotment, I imagine. Something along those lines. You'll have to look in the book. The homes, I can get out.
Wilson Lake's 146 acres. Malt is 40. Three D's, thirty seven. So then he, I think what, if you take the top line, the standard calculation, watershed per acre phosphorus budget is 0.04. U are 0.09. So it sounds to me like you don't need to mitigate it.
So he's way under.
But in that top one, it doesn't take into account anything that you've done in my addition. I'm adding 175 acre, uh, square feet of roof.
Haven't you, haven't you included that in the existing developed area?
I did not. I put that in thinking that was my existing one that's there before I started my project. And that's why I thought that I was doing that down below.
I think you want your total.
Project acreage is A. To, to existing developed acres, 0.05, and you add your project acreage. That's your whole lot.
So that the area available for development down there below was that 10%? Or 0.025, and as long as I was gonna be under that, I thought it was gonna be, you know, it would be fine.
Does anyone else think we need an explanation?
Yes, of course.
Can we just research that and see what the possibility is?
Yeah, no, we just go ahead and we'll come to see.
Right, so...
Or they just mean you can have something, maybe?
If, you know, from something written, I, I think it would be great to, just using Bob's initial toehold here, to say, hey, we gotta, we gotta propose to the, help walk us through the calculations for this particular site, see what happens. He can throw out, you know, the...
Don't put Bob's name on it.
They just had a long time ago.
Grandfather, if, Ken, was, was volume two a big document?
Um, it's on a computer. I don't know how big it is.
Um, what's the threshold for it?
Well, you know, I didn't download it, I read it right off a website, so I didn't...
If it's, it seems like something...
It's in chapters, you know, so I, I'm sure there's a byline for pushing the whole book, but I don't know how many pages it would be.
What time is scheduled for the...
Right.
What, what do you mean by this far, I mean, what?
People are almost in penises.
Yeah. You scheduled meetings with them?
We, our tenor schedule for the subcommittee group is, is the last Tuesday of the month.
What time?
Seven.
Seven? Well, we didn't decide what time.
Well, so you did, you keep us interested. We tried to work it out.
I know.
Seven's normal.
It's kinda late, we're gonna be Paul and Paul.
This meeting should be earlier too, I think, five o'clock, if it isn't going to. It's four in the morning.
Seven o'clock. Got it dark, and out of the door she threw a ambience.
Um, okay, well, you can, you can do some time, something. Any more thoughts?
Seems like your initial calculation here seems like it could be pretty accurate. About a quarter of your budget, which is good, so. Seems like it's a workable worksheet, along, you know, with some...
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Did you really talk about that, um, visiting that site? I saw the minutes from last night.
I, I asked, I knew Kenny was gonna get back to us on that, I guess.
Where is that? Which one was that?
That was the one on Broad Street.
That was up in West.
It's fancy architects.
That was the one I missed, I forgot.
You should stop checking it out. I think I should go back, since you didn't write it.
Can we adjourn?